We'll call the meeting to order. Would everyone rise, face the flag, remove your headgear as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have our quorum here of four members, two were not able to be here this evening. Katie Lochner is ill, and Jo Lynn has taken a spring break, so we'll do what we have here. Any changes to the agenda?
Not that I have.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll move to approve.
Luke?
Second.
Second by Clint. Other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Scheduled presenters, we have two. We'll begin with robotics presentation, one of my favorites. Joe, would you like to step out here and...
Yeah, I'll start, but I, with everything robotics, I automatically turn everything over to the kids. This is our eighth year, and Dave Ingraham and I started the program a long time ago. The program's gotten stronger and stronger, but our philosophy since the very beginning was to make it, kids led. Some robotics teams don't exactly do it that way, but I think that's the right way. They learn it on this way, the fact that they're going to learn to talk in front of people. Sarah is one of our captains, she's going to do most of the talking, but I have Dan Sullivan, Tyler McGuire, and Thomas Ellers. We do have 20, well, Sarah will go through the numbers, we have quite a few more kids, but some of them aren't on spring break or doing things too, but I'm turning it over to Sarah.
So I'm Sarah, I'm a junior at Cannon Falls High School, and this is my fourth year on our team. This year, we have 24 students on our team, six of which are seniors who have been with us for four or five years, and we do have some rookie seniors, so we're always pulling in people. We have six mentors, which is quite a large number. We've got Joe and Dave, and quite a few others that help with various sub projects. And we have one bus driver who is very loyal to us, he's Bob. We love him, he loves us, he comes with us to every event. So we have four or five major events throughout the year. We have an off-season event in November, which uses the game from the previous year. It kind of kicks off our season. It's a great way for us to pull in new people, say, hey, come check out what we do, and just, if you have a free Saturday in November when we go up to this. We usually go to Prior Lake now. Our game reveal is on January 7th. It's a worldwide reveal, released by FIRST, which is the organization that runs this whole team, and that tells us what our game is for the year, which helps us figure out what we're going to build for a robot for the year. Our design and build starts right away. We start that day brainstorming, thinking of strategy for the game, what we need our robot to do, what we want our robot to do. It's a full-day event, and then we have six weeks until our first event, which is our Week Zero event. It's a single-day event, we go to some high school up in the cities. It's very small, but it gets our robot out there, so we can test out all the new things that we've built, and then we can go back and fix everything up before we head to our first event, which is in Duluth. It's a three-day event, we drive up on Thursday, very early in the morning, and we're there until very late on Saturday. We ended up ranked 28th of 60, which is pretty good, in our opinion. We usually land about halfway in the rankings on our first event, and it's great for us because then we get to go back home, and then we have about three weeks until we head to our second event, which is in Iowa, which is another three-day event. This year, we didn't do as well as we had hoped to, we ended up ranked 33 out of 56, but according to data that we scout and gather from our robot and from all other teams, we actually improved 60% in our scoring between our two events. But every other robot improves between two events too, so we kind of balanced out. A big part of our team is our sponsors, so we have many sponsors who give us a lot of money, including Gemini, Western Digital, Herkey Heating, the Joe Showbert Foundation, and 200 Water LLC. These are really important to us, we get almost $20,000 a year, because it is really expensive to be a team. It's about $9,000 for us to go to our two events. They're big events, and the FIRST Foundation has to pay for everything, and we have to pay to go to them. Paying for robot parts is a big part, too. That robot right there cost about $5,000 to build, and actually, last week, we just placed an order for $3,500 for a new drivetrain for our next year's robot, and then in total, we spend about $2,000 on new tools and parts every year. And one big thing, Gemini Sign Works is our biggest sponsor. They give us more money than I think anybody else can receive from anywhere. They give us about $10,000 a year, and this year, actually, they donated this sign to us behind me. We've always had a sign made by Gemini, since it's their thing and they're our biggest sponsor, but our old one was falling apart, we decided we wanted a new one. It's a great project to get kids involved if they can't get their hands on the robot or any of our other projects, and it's really big at events. We attract all sorts of different people who are like, hey, your sign is really cool, can I get a picture? Three or four years ago, we were on the news for it, so it's kind of a big deal on our team. Outside of our, talking to just our sponsors, we do lots of other community outreach, so for recruitment and just getting kids involved. We do a Lego camp in the summer for elementary school children through the community ed. That's about a week long, we use Legos and do a bunch of different tasks. We do an IMDb Lego education outreach for 4th and 5th graders in the fall. Last fall, we went to the elementary school science night with our robot. The kids love it, we let them drive it. It's got bumpers on it, so we're never really worried about anyone breaking it. We do elementary school demos, so three weeks ago, right before we left for our second competition, we went down to the elementary school, we did a 20-minute demo for 2nd through 5th graders, and we let their teachers come down and drive the robot, which is always really big competition between classes. We do an education foundation demo during their benefit auction, and this year, we have been asked to go to Gemini's family picnic in the summer and demo our robot again. Everybody loves seeing it, we love showing it off, it's a great deal. Our goals, so we are a great team to be on, but we're kind of really quiet, so we have to do all this outreach to get more people coming in. We like to advocate and get people interested in STEM, it's a really important field. We want to make robotics more accessible, so we always go, you know, you probably know nothing about building or coding, but show up anyways. I knew really not that much before I joined the team, and I know so much about different STEM aspects now. We like to recruit kids and families because it's a great experience and it's great to get your hands on, and we just like to show appreciation for the program. Students gain a lot from being on this team. The most important to me is like real-world, hands-on experience with power tools, with coding, with understanding what everything on this robot is called. It's great for building resumes. FIRST is a global organization, and it is recognized by colleges, it is recognized by every engineering business out there, and so when they, you say, hey, I was on our FIRST robotics team, colleges and businesses really like to see that because they know you have this experience. FIRST offers a lot of scholarships too, and colleges offer a lot of scholarships for being on our robotics team, so that's always great for when you're going into college to have those scholarships behind you. Another big thing is we get connections to local businesses and mentors from the workplace and the FIRST community itself. The FIRST community is big and it's widely recognized, and businesses also recognize us. I know we have a lot of people on our team and a lot of alumni who have actually been offered internships and jobs at Gemini because they were on our team. It's pretty cool. And then there's just these great long-term connections that you're built. I know a lot of our alumni who have graduated three, four, or five years ago still show up and help out, or still show up to our game reveal or our events, because it's a great team to be on, and they just keep coming back. And finally, we'll get to what our game looks like this year. So like I said, in January, on January 7th, we're given a video that explains the whole game. Every year, it's centralized around some sort of like global theme, and this year, it was sustainable energy. So we have our power grid, which we are supposed to charge up by placing the cones and cubes on their respective areas. FIRST is really known for this word they invented called "cooperative," which means it's a competition, but it's cooperative. So this year, they actually had a rule that if you worked with the opposing team and you both got the same amount of points on your grid and your opponent's grid, then you got extra points collectively. We also have this charge station, which is auto-balancing, so it tips a lot, and the goal is to get your robot driven up on here and balanced, so it's within a few degrees right in the middle. And that is done both at the very beginning of the game, during the autonomous or the completely robotic part of the game, and at the end, during the tele-operated, where we use both a manual and an autonomous program to get us up on here and balanced. And also, it wasn't a very defensive-heavy game this year, but playing defense is another aspect that you consider when you're looking at a game. And this year, we had, pretty simple build-wise, if you look at our robot, it's not super-complex, even though it kind of looks like it. From my standpoint, it's not very complex. So we had to spend a lot of time programming our autonomous programs and giving our drivers a chance to get some practice, so we could really be strong in the game this year. And now we're going to do just a little presentation of the extra robot moving around, so you guys can see what it looks like.
Let me mention two things before you start driving, and Danny, you're to come up and drive too, right? Sarah's humble, obviously, and I'd like to share a couple stories of things that happened during our event. One of them was, there's a gearbox in here that I can't easily point out, somewhere in here, that actually completely got stripped in one of our last matches, and we have an hour or so to fix them, so it gets pretty stressful. And Sarah, who claims that she didn't know anything, which is actually true, four years ago, she was the one that led the effort, got her hands pretty dirty, I'd say, and took care of cleaning that robot up and getting it on the field again. One of the cool parts of the competition is just watching real-world stress and hard deadlines happen. The other one that I always like to share is how our team members help other teams. So there was a young team that, they had a drivetrain that they had no experience with at all. Their robot could go straight, and it could go to left and right, but it couldn't turn, so they were basically stuck in the middle of the field during practice. So we ended up sending one of our software team members over and one of our software mentors, and they spent three hours with that team. And the next day, they were able to completely drive their robot, completely compete, actually, I think we ended up competing with them one match, and they were doing great. So it's a competition where that stuff happens all the time, either a broken robot or a software problem. We do that, we had an alumni come up to Duluth, same thing happened, where there was a team that needed help with software, we sent our alumni over there, so it's one of the cool aspects of FIRST, so. Want to drive? Yep. Neither one of these are drivers for the competition, takes a lot of practice. Once they get good at the game, it becomes a lot more smooth. You can try to drive the next one again. Trying to get up on the charging station. Happy to drive! Roll off. So during the competition, this charging station in the middle is twice the size, and the goal at the end of the match is actually to get three robots up on that charging station altogether, so they actually have to talk to each other and work together. Two matches, we were able to get all three robots up, it was pretty cool, it was pretty fun to watch. You guys have any questions for the guests?
You know, I would certainly like it if all three members would step up and give us your names and such.
Danny?
Danny?
I'm Dan Sullivan. This is my first year on the team, and I mostly just do like the, I work on the mechanical part of the robot.
I am Tyler. I usually, it is my third year, but this, on the team, I believe, but usually, I would just help with like smaller jobs, but this time, I was focusing more on doing like CAD design for parts that went on the robot.
And we are super thankful for our CAD team this year. If you look at our robot at all, any of these pieces that are bright red, were custom-designed by our CAD team and 3D-printed out, so we have a very custom robot, so we're really grateful for everyone who knows how to CAD and does that for us.
Wasn't one of my parts like, switched to metal and then fully cut out?
Yep.
Yeah, so sometimes we 3D-print parts as a prototype, and then we'll use metal, actually. We really, that was probably our biggest step up this year, was our CAD team. Tyler helped lead that team. Thomas, can introduce yourself too, he was a huge CADer to me. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Thomas, this is my first year on the game robotics. I've mostly helped design CAD stuff. I even designed some of the stuff on the rubber part of the robot. I even designed, so the middle part looked like a bot plumb to go with our teammate on the bot.
Did an awesome job. We have, Sarah mentioned, we have six other mentors. There's, Brent is one, a community member, you know, he works for the state of Minnesota, doesn't really have much affiliation with the school except for robotics. The CAD person, she is a 3M engineer, and she kind of helps run the CAD team at the end, community member that just heard about this and thinks it's awesome.
Her husband's a robot mentor.
Yeah, and her almost husband, they're not married, but they live together. Brandon, he's from Western Digital, he works mostly for software on the team, so it's kind of cool that we have some community members that are just, they kind of reached out to us and just sort of adopted the team, and they're awesome mentors. These guys can attribute to, like, I'm sure Thomas and Tyler can talk about how great Gassman is as a mentor. Our goal, all the mentors' goals, is to not put our hands on the robot, not put our hands on the keyboard, but to teach the kids, and she does an awesome job with the CAD team. Any questions?
Or comments?
Anybody want to drive it?
I don't want to ruin it now, but thank you for that. Sarah, great job explaining that too, good job.
I think somebody should try and give it up on it, I tried to say, so we'll see how hard it is. All the teachers did it.
You got it, bro.
Yeah. For every reason, you can't drive a two-fender.
You know, the success that you've achieved simply by going to meet, pulling in some businesses, Joe, you and Dave have been on here since its infancy, thank you so much. It gives our kids another opportunity, and we are filled with opportunities here in our school district, and this is one of them. You should be proud of robotics because we are in your behalf. Thank you for participating.
Thank you for having us.
One thing I guess I should say, if, you know, I'm in part of the school board and presenting, school has been very helpful for us, given us lots of opportunities. The one area that I think we need help in from school and school board administration, whatever, is just more dedicated space. We're trying to make that next leap, I think we're, you know, there's super teams around the world that we're never going to get to, and then there's teams that are pretty strong teams, and that's where we want to try and get to. One of the problems that we seem to have a lot is just having all of this stuff stored all over the school. It takes us probably, you know, 15, 20 minutes, half an hour to get set up, 15, 20 minutes, half an hour to get torn down. If we had more dedicated space, a nice, you know, 20 by 20 square foot area that was dedicated to us for two months or three months, it would help our team just take that next step, and that's what we're trying to do, you know, as we grow this team. I'll tell you where we first started, eight years ago, which I don't know if anybody's on the board at that time, but we were in, I think it's the Spanish Room now, and we had to hand parts out the window, so we'd get cut out on the sidewalk or whatever, so we weren't even close to the metal shop. So we've come a long way in eight years, but I'm just hoping to get that next step, to get more dedicated resources. Right now, we're just kind of spread all over the school and have to, you know, get things together. We're hoping once the, all the work that's being done to improve that area in CTE, that there can be some area allocated for us.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, guys, wonderful presentation.
We're going to take about a 10-minute break, so you guys can tear down a little bit, and we'll reconvene. We will reconvene. Our second scheduled presenter is Mr. Sampson, who will give us another presentation on finance that we've asked for.
Yes, thank you. This is the third part in our school finance presentation. If we have questions as we go through this, please make sure that you stop me and ask, and Josh will be sitting on this as well. This session will break down the general fund, which we talked about the funds at the last meeting, and we're going to specifically talk about the general fund, which is Fund One tonight, and we'll talk about the five different categories within the general fund. And those categories are listed there as non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So within the non-spendable category, a good definition of the non-spendable category is that are amounts that cannot be spent because they are either not in a spendable form like inventory, or they are legally or contractually required to remain intact, and an example of that would be property. Currently, we only have a fund like this set up in our food service fund, obviously for the inventory, and for prepaid lunch account balances and food inventory. Josh, you can jump in too, or throw something at me if I misspeak. In the restricted category, a working definition of the restricted category are funds that should be restricted when constraints that are placed on the funds are either externally imposed on by creditors like debt covenants, or imposed by law through constitutional provisions or enabling legislation which authorizes a government body to levy, charge, or otherwise mandate payment of resources like the Safe School Levy. Those are restricted dollars that are coming in from those levies, and only can be used for specific purposes. We will talk briefly at the number four presentation on the levy. I mean, you guys can go and do the weeds on that if you want to, we'll stay pretty high level on the, what is it, about a 40-page document, three columns, single space. And we'll also get into a little bit of the coding in our next presentation. Other examples of restricted dollars would be operating capital dollars or LTFM dollars that have defined purposes for that.
LTFM, once more.
Long-term facilities maintenance, that's a good catch. Committed category. By definition, these dollars are used to describe the portion of the fund balance designated for a particular use by formal action of the school board. Committed funds cannot be used for any other purposes other than what was decided by the school board unless the school board takes action to change it. And Josh, do you have an example of that?
Yeah, I think, and we don't necessarily call this way, we just do it more as a board level question each year, but an example we could use for committed funds would be in energy dollars. They're essentially unassigned general fund dollars, and we're using them for facilities' objects, so technically, those would be committed funds. The board has committed those dollars to a certain purpose.
Either you guys are good learners, or I'm a good teacher, or you guys don't have any questions. Again, if you come across questions, let me know. Assigned category. The definition represents the amounts which use is constrained for specific purposes by the school board or a committee, for example, the finance committee, or an official like the superintendent that has been delegated authority to assign amounts. And the examples that we have here in Cannon Falls include donations, scholarships, and Make sense? Okay. Unassigned category. By definition, these, this represents funds that do not fit into any of the other categories, and they represent resources that are available to meet any current and future year's expenditures. A significant portion of our operating budget comes from here, so anything that we have for operating funds throughout the year that are not in the other categories come from this unassigned balance. And then the balance at the end of the year is what we base our unassigned fund balance on, which is our savings account at the end of the year. So any dollars left over are left in the unassigned, and then we create a new budget for the next year. Make sense? Look at this, general funds, pretty easy.
I was always a little confused about the assigned category that we have versus, and now the committed funds. They're different, but the same.
So basically what it looks like, so, about 10, 15 years ago, Gassby wants this to be...
Oh, hang on, Gassby.
I generally accept the accounting principles, but I couldn't tell you the exact, we're not an actual accountant, I just play one on TV.
Bill could maybe explain that a little bit more.
Government Board for Accounting, and they have lots of time on their hands to give us regulations that...
Changes.
Yeah, lots of changes. So whenever we get kind of comfortable on something, there's a new Gassby rule change, and then we've got to kind of adjust how we do our accounting and work with our accountants or auditors to make that work. But what happened is, rather than just having kind of one pool of money in the general fund, they want things broken out a little bit more defined. So you basically step, non-spendable, those dollars, they can't spend anything with their inventory or their land purchases, there's really not anything that the board can do to spend on. Restricted is set basically by legislation, it's where kind of levy amounts or items and those, so there's a higher-level authority kind of restriction where those dollars can be spent. Committed, now you're at the board level, the board can decide if they want to decide where they want some dollars, you have to basically commit them from the unassigned to that area, but then they would be at the board level, that's what those funds are for. You go to assigned, and now you're loosening the strings a little bit more, and it could be the finance committee, superintendent or finance director that can help assign those dollars. So whether you get down to unassigned, which is basically the operating funds of the district. So it goes from real high-level restriction to broad-based of what we can spend our dollars on. By doing so, it kind of helps the district keep a better eye on maybe where dollars are at in terms of what they can spend, maybe what they can negotiate, what dollars they actually have that can be spent. Otherwise, you end up maybe tying up funds that are restricted, maybe for building maintenance or other items that are Safe School Levy type item. You don't want to take those dollars away from those items that are in need of those funds. And then it kind of relates then to our, it's all back to our finance and our fund balance policy, and really what we're looking, we're trying to drive the general fund, fund balance policy based on the unassigned, because those are the dollars that the district has to use for any type of expenses in the district. So to have a good unassigned fund balance, those are dollars that are free to use at the district's discretion. Auditors like to say 12 to 16 percent, because that gives you two months approximately of, if you were to totally be shut off, you'd have those amount of dollars to get you through for two months. We operate on much thinner levels than that, we changed our fund balance policy to strive to a 6 to 8 percent. I think at the last audit, we were roughly around that, a little over 3 to 4 percent. So part of what we do is try to balance the needs and wants of the district financially, and keep as healthy a fund balance as we can, and sometimes those decisions are pretty difficult to make because when you have a building balance, it's what you want to do financially to be more stable for our district, but there are also needs and wants, but that's where kind of the board decision has that authority.
We shouldn't be alarmed at the fact that in the best-case circumstance, they talk about 12 percent fund balance as being great, but we shouldn't be concerned about it because very few schools have a fund balance of that size.
Yeah, I would say, you know, probably more districts than, more districts don't have that sort of fund balance than, there's certainly are districts that are at that level, and usually that is a, once you get over that 16 percent, if you're a district with 20 or more percent, you're probably getting questions by your taxpayers, or you have a reason you're building those funds up for. You definitely could be building that unassigned for, you know, build an upgrade or whatever may be, whatever that district has, and my, each district's different. But you'd probably start getting some questions by taxpayers when you start getting past what maybe an auditor would suggest for your fund balance. what maybe an auditor would suggest for your fund balance.
It was our hope or our drive to increase our fund balance over the next couple of years. Can you see that happening, or is that just?
Well, it's gonna take some work. So, school districts' funding is, would be almost entirely generated by pupils, numbers two, if you don't go out and have big sales or have ways to get that in. Either by pupils or by an operating bond. There are really kind of two methods to get funding to the district. So, when we graduate classes that are larger than the classes that are coming in, there's revenue reduction just built in intrinsically in that part. So, that's tough to do. With the tech levy that was passed by the public, we have been doing a lot of those items already through the unassigned general fund. So, that will have some relief on it, on the unassigned portion. So, there'll be some potential to build that up, but we have to offset some of that loss of revenue as well. So, there's either seventy-five percent roughly of our budget is salary and benefits. So, as long as we are right sizing whatever we may have to do for staffing, there's a potential that that tech levy could help increase that fund balance a little bit. But it also might give the board some opportunity if there are some needs there throughout the district as well. But I think, you know, in general, is there a way out or a way to build that up? Certainly is, but I would again be mindful on what the needs are and the wants.
Questions or comments?
So, as an example, for the committed, would you say, you know, the board takes action to do bus purchases? Would that fall into the committed?
Yeah.
So, you're actually moving those funds?
Yep. I think it could fall in both. If it's gonna be within that fiscal year, it could fall definitely in a primary review approval budget each year. If it's within that fiscal year, we may not allocate that to carry over in the balance sheet for the next year. To me, it looks, to me, it's more of like the energy dollars. We're committing that hundred fifty thousand dollars is gonna be used on facility-type items, so that would kind of fall into that category. We have done it basically more as we ask the board permission to do that, and that's how we restrict ourselves within the budget here. If we were to carry those funds over for, that would probably maybe get more into presentation number four. Our UFRS expansion revenue codes are seven-digit codes. They all close into those balance sheets at the end of the fiscal year. So, it's really more at the end of the fiscal year when we get to audit part where we're gonna carry those funds over to the committed area. So, if we had, say we wanted to commit or carry over some of those energy dollars to next year, you know, reserves a fifty thousand dollars, of course, we have twenty thousand dollars to spend the next year. We'd want to commit those to that balance sheet for the next year. But it's, it's a higher level. Neither Mr. Sampson or myself would be able to necessarily commit funds, because that's gonna come at the board level. We could assign funds, but not commit them.
Anyone else? Mr. Sampson, you finished? Not quite?
I am. So, next time, we will dive into UFRS codes in the levy document, and so you can bring your popcorn and snacks, and we can--
What codes?
UFRS.
Thank you.
Yes. UFRS codes in the levy. Nothing more exciting. That's all I have to say.
Perfect.
GASB versus UFRS?
It's kind of a horse apiece.
I understand UFRS better than you have.
Anyone else? Otherwise, we'll move along. Okay, thank you. We don't have a representative from the students here this evening, but did, I think if you look in your packet--
I think you had a report in your packet. Yep.
So, please refer to that as your time permits, just to update you, and I'm sure Reed will probably fill us in on some of that as well, what's going on with everyone this spring. Committee reports. Does anyone have anything for the cause?
I do not.
Yeah, we had facilities met. It was more so just to wa, as Clinton and I, being fairly new, we hadn't walked through their budget yet and how that works. So, Josh and Dave did a good job of showing us how that works, really all we discussed in that meeting. Our PAC committee met regarding the construction. All things are in good shape there. Culture in good shape, no real concerns financially. Materials are coming in, and they're ready to start. The only thing holding it up is waiting on permits from the state. So, they've been applied for, they're just kind of waiting for those to come through. So, and then extracurricular, we meet on this Wednesday. So, I'll have an update later on that.
Okay.
Ed Foundation, a few weeks ago, we had a speaker, Joe Beckman, wildly successful, talking to different students and parents. Nothing but rave reviews on that. Also, for the Ed Foundation, one of our biggest fundraisers of the year is coming up this weekend, Mill Street Tavern, so hopefully everyone can show up. I believe that's starting at six o'clock, so, yeah.
It's a great social, a great event.
Excited for this weekend. It's a really fun weekend, so.
Jeff and I went to the GCED. We had a special meeting last week. Each representative brought in their superintendent for discussion. Budgetary issues, of course, like everyone else, is at the forefront. GCED, of course, is the consortium of six schools within our, within our county that provide services for, for some of our students and kind of trying to shake things out a little bit, make sure that we're, we're giving people the best bang for the buck. And we'll have our regular meeting, and we'll have probably some budgetary answers, if you will, at that April twenty-seventh, I believe, meeting. So, Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add to it?
No, not for the GCED one. I was gonna say something about the marketing. We are moving forward with the surveys for parents, students, and staff. Those should be coming out in the next couple of weeks, and they'll be open for a couple of weeks, and they should end about a week or so before school ends. And that'll provide valuable feedback for our admin team and the board to take a look at for how we can do better. That's all I had for committees.
I look forward to that. I hope that everyone answers honestly with that, to give nice positive feedback.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Any other committees? Moving down to administrative reports. Because we're on an Easter Monday, and we're just coming off a break, we don't have everyone here to do their reports, but yet we do have reports within your, within your agenda, so you can review those as, as necessary. Elementary's in there, high school, tech, and mid, middle school is in there. Reed is here. Reed, would you like to play some catch-up on what's going on in your life?
We're gonna start playing tomorrow, weather permitting--
Yes, sir.
--and fields and golf courses and everything in between, so excited about that. Just wanted to touch base with you about the Mayo Clinic piece here. We're still kind of going through that. We're gonna reach out to, or reach out to Olmsted Medical Center, see what they can offer. But Mayo has not offered us athletic training services for next year. They're saying that location-wise, we're too far away from Rochester. It's an issue. It's an issue for many other HBL schools and other surrounding schools where they are looking to increase their costs substantially. Super Jan Sampson has more information, and talking with superintendents about what they're going to be doing. But everybody's really essentially looking to see what our best options are and how we can provide some type of prevention and care and coverage on game nights, so.
Just to give you an idea, some of the contracts that were offered to the other HBL schools are in the neighborhood of a fifty percent increase. Or, I'm sorry, no, it's more than that. I did that wrong.
Usually around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's more of the ninety percent increases.
To keep their services--
Does Mayo Health Systems even in town here?
We get our services from the mothership.
Right, but Mayo Health Systems--
We, I've been in contact with their operational lead out there and, and asked how we can partner to make sure that we have an opportunity for the clinic in town to help, so.
Interestingly enough--
Nothing coming back?
No, they're working on it. So.
When they need us, when they build their new facility, we're front and center with that, with that response to them and pulling. And now, on the other hand, not so important.
Well, and keep in mind that the local clinic is working, you know, trying to get something going for us, so.
Okay, cool.
But yeah, it's about a ninety percent increase that the other schools have been offering.
It'll just look diff, whatever we come up with is ironic, it's gonna be different than what we've been accustomed to. It's not the same face for, you know, two o'clock on for practices and at game nights and moving from this activity to that activity. It could be wherever we're fortunate to be able to get, you know, it's just gonna have to be, we're gonna have to communicate, make sure that they're at the right location and--
So, one of the schools that emailed me tonight said that their contract offer was that last year they were paying twenty-eight thousand, and next year they're being asked to pay forty-nine thousand.
I surely hope that our local health system here will step up with all the, all the support that they've gotten in the past to get to where they are here, so.
I would hope so, and I, hopefully, to have faith in that.
And hopefully, many of the people out there that are listening to that will actually address that to them, okay?
Well, there's, there's show quest names in that first floor there.
There's plenty of show quest names out there.
Yeah, there is.
Reed, is there other places you've been, or Jeff, other schools? Have they done it differently at those places that you have some history of?
They're not even offering that. So, what I've been used to is, we maybe have one person that would come to this, to the building once or twice a week during the school day just to deal with injuries. But then, come game nights, you would maybe have somebody there game nights, or you never knew who was coming, or they would come sometime beginning of JV or halfway through JV or the start of varsity. So, it was always, or we might've gotten bummed to go cover some bigger events somewhere else, but we weren't even offered that. We were flat-out offered nothing.
And when I was, you know, how ancient I am, I know times have changed, but when I was a head coach, we didn't have trainers. Then, we took prevention and care of athletic injuries, and we taped angles, and we weren't doctors, but we knew when they should probably go see a doctor. And so, it can be done, it won't be optimal, but there's something that we could maybe talk about creating a, you know, something on a C schedule or something to give somebody an opportunity to get trained up a little bit more and have that be our person throughout the year. So, I don't know, I, we're exploring options, so.
Reed, you're jumping into some community ed for the summer with both feet. How is, you're into the sign-ups, or you passed that signup stage?
Oh, no, we're still going until, up till May eighteenth for both Cannon Kids and preschool, so.
And summer activities in general, outdoor activities?
Correct. That's gonna be getting released here on, I believe, Friday, so, for our summer flyer.
Just really never lets up, does it? It rolls from one to the other.
Keep going.
Keeps you busy.
Is this sixty-two total? Is that on par, behind, above?
At this stage, I don't know that answer.
Sure.
We have to think, because we started things a little bit sooner. But it's, they're filling up, because we're doing priority for full day this time around. So, if you, if you look at, you basically want to add that thirty-three and the nine, because if you look at, if you look at your packet there when I threw these numbers out, that's really gonna be that forty-two is what that is gonna be when you factor in the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, full day, and Tuesday, Thursday will air to the nine instead of the seven, and we're gonna get more, so, plenty more. We'll have a meeting here with our team here, hopefully sometime this week, beginning of next week, what that's gonna look like in regards to class sizes and if we need to implement a halftime teacher or anything that that looks like.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Superintendent's report?
Yes. Couple of items here that I've added since I created the report. Need to find my report. Construction updates, we've already talked about. Roof insurance update, that's been an ongoing saga since last April, so about a year now, for the elementary roof. Had a meeting with our engineer that we hired, if you remember us hiring that, the separate person to do our own investigation, and then met with the insurance engineer last week, and they exchanged some information. The insurance rep said that he would get back to me this week. I'm not really sure what that means. But depending on how that meeting goes, we might be having a meeting with, or myself and the board, and maybe an insurance rep, or our roofing person to talk through some things at a closed meeting, so, to discuss options. So, more to come on that. I received a letter from the teachers' union on the intent to begin negotiations, and so I've sent an email to their negotiations lead, or at least who the negotiations lead was last year, I'm assuming it's the same person, and asked when they would like to get started. I'm guessing it'd probably be after the legislative session is complete. That would probably make the most sense, but we'll see what he comes back with. And then, I want to thank all of our staff and families for their flexibility and endurance last week during our issue that we had here in town, and it was, I couldn't be more proud of the staff and the students actually for the way that they handled themselves, and we got through it, through some different variables, I guess, throughout the day that we had to deal with, and everybody did a great job, and we got everybody home safe, so.
Nothing but positive feedback.
Yeah, it is a lot deeper than what you're saying with the report. You know, we weren't integrally involved as far as our community was involved, but we had to follow through with some, some issues. Was this a code? Is that?
Yeah, it ended up being a, we went into a soft lockdown here at school, and then I think the bigger issue was figuring out what we were gonna do with kids at the end of the day, and how that was gonna work with everything blocked off downtown and not being able to send buses through downtown or even let kids go that were walkers, or, because we have drop-offs in town also. So, we had to scramble on the fly to get that figured out, and then coordinate with the local law enforcement to allow people in and to allow people out of the cordoned-off area. So, coordination worked well. We're having a follow-up meeting with the chief, hopefully later at the end of this week to talk through of things that went well and things that we can improve upon, and yeah, I just want to thank everybody for their efforts, so.
Clinton and Luke, you, you got kids in the school at this point in time, so you're right, we've heard a lot of positive things, and we weren't even directly involved. People like Bill and I, we just, we hear, but you hear much more.
I personally heard there was one negative thing heard amongst any parents or whoever else that I talked with and whoever else. My, my wife came and picked up the kids. She said it wasn't as smooth as can be, a little bit of weight here and there. No one's, no one should complain about that when it comes to something, when safety ways. Excellent. Just hands down to Mr. Sampson, Mr. Hodges, Ms. Shapie, and the entire staff. I'm told all the teachers were doing a great job of getting students out to get onto their rides and just hands down--
It was support staff, too. It's not, you know, it was, teachers did a great job, but there was support staff out there, too.
Right, just hands down, absolutely everyone across the board, phenomenal job handling a situation like that. And me personally, I couldn't be more proud to be a Cannon Falls parent.
Let's not forget the people down at the bus garage and the drivers.
Oh, yeah.
For sure.
Yep.
You know, you practice, you practice for these things hoping it'll never occur, and when it occurs like it did, and everybody was coordinated as they were, it, it shows. You know, we've, we talked about safety issues when we've had some interaction with some audience members in the past and how important it is to us. Well, it would appear that the school showed up.
Yeah.
So.
I would just add, you know, as a parent, or, you know, when, when we first heard about the incident, nobody knew where it was. You heard things, and unfortunately, in today's world, you think, think the worst, right? And, and I think the communication from the school as quickly as we could was, was important to let people know where-- people know where and what was happening and where your child was. I think that was very well done, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I just didn't want to minimize your statement here because it was much bigger than that. We don't have, we don't have issues like that often and hopefully we won't see any more, but you never know.
Right, right. That's all I have.
Okay.
If you guys have questions.
All right, public input. Our group is small this evening. Does anyone have anything that they'd like to present to the board concerning things on the agenda? Moving on. New business, we have no old business to deal with. Under new business, consideration to approve the 23 to 25 lawn maintenance quotes.
Right, we've got one quote in from Anderson Lawn Care and it is presented there, I believe, along with the comparison quotes from previous years. I do recommend approval on this. They've been a good company to work with.
Good company and local.
So is this their idea to do three years at a time or is that ours?
What has been the history?
It's.
It's ours?
Okay. I'm just, as I look at this, I think, you know, a time where everything costs more and continue to pay more at the grocery store and whatnot, they have stayed pretty consistent.
Yeah, they have, they have.
So I would, I just thank them for that.
Especially with three years and no increase across, it seems.
A motion here?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Clint on the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Other discussion. All in favor of approving the maintenance quotes for the upcoming three years going to Anderson? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the nursing staff reconfiguration. I will let you handle that.
Yes, we've had one of our nurses come and ask for a reduction, basically a leave of absence for one day a week starting next year. And as part of this first approval, a 2.1, I guess, I would ask that the board to consider a reduction in a .2 FTE licensed school nurse slash, she's an RN as well, staff, and be put on an extended leave of absence in accordance with the state statute of 122A46 for up to five years, which is the teachers', she's on the teacher's scale. They can request that up to five years. I'm gonna ask the board to approve that, and that's a one-day-a-week reduction. And then the second one backfills that with an RN person for a .4 FTE. And there's a small increase of roughly just over $5,000 to the district to do this, where we, the first person is Pam Wolf in this case, which I don't know if you guys figured that out or not, but, so I'm asking the board to approve the .2 or one-day-a-week leave. And she has the option to come back after one year, like everybody else in that statute. They just have to notify us by February 1st.
So it's one year for sure.
Yeah.
But it could be up to five.
Yeah, yep.
So if she came back or if the person comes back in two years, this other position?
Would be reduced back.
Would be reduced back.
Yeah. Yeah, the other one is an at-will position.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
So if she's the head nurse, then who takes control on the days that she's gone?
The RN would.
Whoever the RN at staff is.
Yep. And we would make, Pam, Pam would schedule to make sure that there is an RN.
So she's still the head?
Yep.
And controlling?
Yeah, she has the licensed school nurse, yep.
She's definitely deserved this after COVID, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Bill?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of the nursing staff reconfiguration? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried.
The 2.2 on this is the consideration to hire a .4 or two-day-a-week RN nurse for the 23-24 school year, and that would be Jessica Anderson. And she's been on as a part-time COVID nurse, or during COVID, during that time.
Okay. That's all part of the reconfiguration that we just approved?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, consideration to approve the updated 22-23 spring coaching list. Reed?
Yep, last one for you.
You gotta do a motion and a second on the hiring of Jessica.
That isn't all one?
No, we handed them separately. Sorry about any confusion.
I'd make the motion to hire the .4 FTE nurse.
Motion by Luke?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint.
I had just a question for Jeff. You say she was on the staff through COVID, so how was she, what was her FTE currently?
I believe she was two days a week, Lori.
Yep.
Yep.
We're just increasing it in order to have that transition covered.
She's not, she's not decreasing, but we're reducing Pam.
Right, we're increasing her.
Well, not if she's working two days a week.
No.
No, that's right, it wouldn't be.
Right. The total increase technically would be a .2, but the cost is a lot less than a .2 because of ones in at-will power levers is a salary.
That's why I wanted clarification.
We're going down in value, value or cost of those.
From what we have with COVID.
Yes.
We're going down.
Down, yep.
That's why I wanted clarification. Yep, thank you.
Okay, we'll close the discussion. All in favor of the consideration to hire a .40 FTE nurse? I got that right?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the updated 22-23 spring coaching list. Reed?
Oh, I lost my screen.
Last one for you for the spring.
Thank you.
You're sure?
Yep. Mike Buzel is gonna help out JV golf.
Okay, that's the only change?
Yes.
Questions for Reed? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Clint?
I'll second.
Luke on the second. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the updated 22-23 spring coaching list? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the 22-23 class of 61 trade school scholarship of 500 bucks.
Yes, Safran was notified by the class of 1961 that they would like to do a one-time scholarship award of $500 from the class of 1961 for a trade school scholarship, and we're looking for an approval.
It's an easy one.
I'll move to approve. I absolutely love this. This is great.
Bill, you approve? Second?
I'll second.
Clint? On the second. Other discussion. All in, all in favor of the class of 61 scholarship for 500 bucks? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the 23-24 fee schedule?
Yeah, this is a yearly item. And there were not, other than the meals that were already approved to go up, there isn't any other increases for next year.
What is the total meal cost going to be next year again?
Zero.
Oh, yeah. If that wasn't the case, sorry.
Yep. Additional full student meals at the correct price, up further?
Yep, all the way at the top. Breakfast is the.
220.
Oh, that was the second meal cost near the bottom. Yep.
$3.10.
220 for breakfast and 310 for the high school, and then the elementary is $3.
A motion? Look for a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Bill?
I'll second.
And Clint on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the 23-24 fee schedule? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the 23 community use of school facilities and equipment guidelines.
This was last reviewed on April 10th, and I, did you, I don't remember any changes that we've had in the committee or even just subtle changes, so this is the same from the last time as it, as it was passed, so.
Is today the 10th? This was reviewed this Sunday?
It was, well, it'll be reviewed today by the board.
We are the reviewees.
Yes, I'm sorry. But the last time it was revised was last year around this time of April 25th.
And you're saying nothing has changed?
Nothing has changed.
Since we redid this, it's been smooth. We haven't had people, I mean, we increased the rate some, but not much.
Right. And we did talk in the facilities meeting this year about if we wanted to come up with a class four pricing to put on there, but we can make that change and add that if we want to have more discussion of facilities. This just helps spell everything out.
Yep.
As to what that's gonna be.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Clint, was that you?
Yeah.
I'll second. Motion by Clint, seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of the 23-24 community use of facilities and equipment guidelines? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve a 23-24 1.0 FTE high school math teaching contract?
This is for Dylan Sally, and I recommend approval. This would be basically filling in for Bucky's spot that he did it one year on to help us out.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve, Dylan.
Luke on the motion? Seconded by?
I'll second.
Bill? Other discussion.
I would just note that Dylan's currently a long-term sub for us.
Yeah, he's doing the everyday subbing piece.
Yep, and an alumni, so that's cool to have him back.
And so Bucky? Bucky's not gonna teach?
Hopefully Bucky comes back and subs. But I think he'd maybe prefer that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Geez, it just seems like Sally quit playing baseball last year, but it's been a while, hasn't it? Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor for the 1.0?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Consideration to approve a 1.0 one-year long-term sub English teaching contract?
Yes, and the name here in that position is Jade Franzen, and I recommend approval.
Look for a motion to approve? Second request, look for a motion to approve?
Maybe.
Do you want to know which?
Maybe an explanation of.
It's for a one-year leave that was approved. Last board meeting for Morgan Schwartz.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry about that.
Motion by Bill?
I'll second.
Seconded by Clint. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the 1.0 FTE one-year long-term sub teaching contract? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article 10, Leaves of Absence, Section 10, childcare leave from September 5 through January 1.
This is for Danielle Hootie, and I recommend approval.
I move to approve.
Luke on the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Clint. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a leave request in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, Article 10, Leaves of Absence, Section 13, extended leave in accordance with State Statute 122A46 for up to five years.
Yes, and this is for Chris Sampson, and I recommend approval.
Is that Chris Sampson?
Chris Sampson, yep.
Look for a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Luke?
I'll second.
On the motion? Bill?
Yep.
On the second. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I got one thing before you adjourn. I forgot to mention during my report.
Sure.
I believe it was mentioned at the last meeting or at least, at least by another board member about having some documents sent out to the board in regards to the path of pre-COVID, through the cuts, COVID dollars, you know, kind of a lineage of how that all flowed and everything, and I have that out to you tomorrow. So you have that background information.
Thank you.
So, yep.
We're gonna take a tour of the middle school, high school?
Yes.
At this point in time.
Before we get walking down the hallway and kind of talking and whatever else, are there things that you specifically want to see?
Want to see?
Like, I mean, a lot of these areas are off, you know, off limits, and we can go in the shop area. We can look at, we can see where the mechanical is. We can kind of walk in through the kitchen area as well. Though a lot of those areas aren't public accessible generally.
Yeah, those three sound good to me.
So.
Take a look at the other items that we've got coming or for the upcoming board member, which, or board meeting, which would include their, our workshop at the end of our next meeting, I believe? So take a look, and if you, if there's anything there you would like to add or inquire to the superintendent or to Lori to see if it's feasible to add, please do so. Other than that, I don't, I don't think we need to keep in session when we take our tour, so I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Was that you, Clint?
Yes, sir.
I didn't look up, sorry. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Luke. Other discussion. All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. We are finished. Thank you.